Good morning. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled border select meeting for Monday, June 3rd, 2024 to order. First order of business, Pledge of Allegiance. Charles.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, Charles. Item two, public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Okay, not in the room, not on Zoom. Let's move on to item three. That's the approved minutes. Three dot one will be the May 20th, 2024 regular meeting. Is there a motion?
Subway.
And a second.
Exactly.
Any comments, questions, suggested changes?
No, but I know.
Okay, got it.
I have an add to agenda.
What's that? Yeah, we'll add it a minute later. Yeah, before we get to that, we just want to get through. All right, no comments or questions. Let me try your minds. Those on Zoom, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to add an item to the agenda? And it would be for Pam at Park and Rec or the upgrade of lighting at Guilford High School tennis courts. Is there a motion?
Subway.
Second?
Second.
Let's put that in after seven. We'll call that seven A. Let me try my mind. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. All right, item four, Deputy Police Chief Sal Messi. Sal, coming up. Detective coming?
Good morning, everybody. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Beautiful weekend. You intending to finish that while you make your presentation?
No.
Then we're going to be here for a little while. Four dot one, discuss and take possible action toward bid number eight dash twenty-three twenty-four for maintenance and cleaning services for the police department animal shelter. Sal?
Yep, we recently went out to bid for environmental services. I'd like to thank Darlene for assisting us with that and Finance Department. Fasool, after receiving and reviewing all the bids, we feel that our current provider is the best value for the community, the lowest bid, and all things considered, I think we should continue award them the contract. Lieutenant Fasool and I have discussed some additional services that they provide and we're going to ensure that they continue to do those, strip and wax floors, cleaning up the outside of our windows to the facility, so I think they would be the best value at this time for our community.
And I was having difficulty reading the total amount for this document, but thirty thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars for PD and then animal shelter.
Yes.
Twenty.
Twenty-three fifty-five.
Twenty-three fifty-five. Is there a motion to approve the contract in the amounts?
Ooh.
There we go.
Second.
And a second. Further comments or questions?
How long have they been doing it?
They've been doing it for...
Since I've been here. Say at least two thousand.
No questions, obviously.
No, no, I, you know, when we, when we bring in different vendors, there's a process too because we have to vet them because they're around sensitive information to this nature. But I have never had an issue with anybody that's come through the police department thus far.
Okay, anything further? All right. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room? That motion carries. Item two, consider and take possible action on the sale of three police vehicles. Sal?
Yeah, so we, we do business with Soli Garage LLC. They've been upfitting our vehicles for several years. This is a practice that has been done in the past. These three vehicles here are vehicles that have been decommissioned for new vehicles. Two of the vehicles have been decommissioned for new vehicles. That would be the police utilities. The Expedition is the training vehicle. They're high mileage vehicles. It's got a lot of wear and tear on them. The 2016 Ford Expedition actually has a the head is no longer good. It's like a forty-four hundred dollar repair just for the Expedition. We feel that the offering that Soli's has made to us would be fair market value. He's offered to credit us on our outstanding invoices, which would take us basically to break even economics on the upfit of the vehicles for the, would include the chief's vehicle. And we have a lot of unforeseen costs with these particular cars. Lieutenant Fasool, of course, can speak in better detail to it, but because they're newer vehicles, some of the components didn't fit. You had to purchase other vehicles. So we asked, we asked for X amount of dollars. And we hope to be as close as we can be to that. But then when you're in the process of upfitting them, the garage will call us and say the push bar does not fit, the cage does not fit accordingly. We need radar, we need two more radar units. We need a new head for the light. The light, so, so it's a moving target. Hopefully, as we move forward, we can dial that in a little bit better, but at least with these vehicles being traded in, it'll take us basically to break even economics.
It's a police utility, you said?
Yes, sir.
Have you looked at just trading them in and value similar or whatever, or that they don't take trade in?
So what we used to do in my previous career is we would take them to state auction, either in New Haven or Meriden, and it's a gamble. You just don't know what you're going to get.
I just thought we purchased a new one because I know we did a few this year. There is, it said, it said every part of the negotiation.
No, they don't, they typically don't take them on trade.
For twenty nineteen, thirty-five hundred dollars, it seemed like a lot. I know they're, I use it. Why I said it tires.
Yeah, you know, when you, when you think about these cars, some of them run twenty-four hours a day.
Oh, I know. I understand all that.
Yeah, multiple, multiple days in a row. You know, I could only tell you that, you know, I, I've driven quite a few of them and even in their short lifespan, because they are used so frequently, they have issues. They have, sometimes they have transmission issues and other things that pop up.
Well, I understand that. It just, you know, you look at the year and you look at the amount. You know, not only that, but they're just weighing it against their services. You know, I'm sure you've looked into it. It's the best we can do. And I know they, they take a beat. We used to just phase them down through the town. That always had issues too. Crown Victoria is a lot different than Explorer. It is what it is.
Great. Is there a motion?
I have a quick question, Matt.
Let's get a motion on the table, please. How low?
I'll say.
There you go. Lou?
Sal, I should, I should know this, and I suspect the answer is no, but does the town pay a sales tax when we purchase one, a new vehicle?
No, sir.
Okay, so like with the, so trading it in or selling them to Soli's, as you, as you said, it, they would have a, a credit to apply that there's no sales tax significance of that one way or the other. As if like when you trade in a vehicle or a new car as a regular person, you get that sales tax delta, which is kind of helpful.
No.
No, not a factor here.
Not a factor.
No, I was just going to comment, if we were to just try to sell these ourselves, there's quite a bit that would have to be done. Painted and everything that had to do with their former use would have to be removed.
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to take all the insignias off on media.
Of radios.
Yeah, actually, in my previous career, we actually went to auction off a vehicle of ours that I had mentioned to one of our mechanics at the time, please make sure you take everything off of it that's makes it identifiable. And I happened to be driving down the main street in the town I used to work in, and the vehicle had been auctioned off. And I said, what the heck? He actually had to come up and take it. Yeah.
All right, we good? Let me try my mind. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. All right, item four dot three, discuss and take possible action on the purchase of new community room furniture. Sal?
Yeah, so the community room at the Guilford Police Department is really utilized frequently by a number of groups outside of the police department. We, we host a number of events there as well. Many of the tables are less than adequate. They're unstable. They, they rock. Chairs, which have a fabric cloth, they're stained, they're dirty. The community room furniture's been there for a number of years. We would like to improve the look of the police departments, and so many community groups do come in there. We hold so many special events in there. We're hoping to make it a little bit more accommodating and attractive for people that use it moving forward. We went out and we got three quotes on the furniture and we settled on Suburban, who came in with the lowest quote. And we took a look at some of the materials and colors that they provide and concluded that it would look very nice in our community.
Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
One second. Charles?
Is it the eleven plus the ten or what is the, the total number? I mean, you got tables and chairs.
It's going to be eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars.
That's total. So, okay, compared to paperwork here, it's tables and chairs, but I guess that's a different bit or something. Yeah, I mean, it's probably original furniture we've built in building.
Yeah, I've been, I was coming there to train the officers for a number of years. I mean, at least, or in my time, it's the same furniture.
It's time. All right, any further comments or questions? Let me try your mind. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Sal, thank you very much. Everybody have a wonderful day.
Thank you. The next. All right, item five, Ethan Family Services Director Lynn Lynn, coming in for five dot one, consider and take possible action on the basement project for thirty-six Graves Avenue.
I brought Mike along because he talked to all the guys that came to do the quotes, so.
Good.
So our basement, so I sent some information before. It's pretty simple. When they finished, when they remodeled the building, they only did half the basement. So the basement part where the furnace is, is all nice and concrete and dry, but the other half is a mold factory. And so when it rains, the walls get wet, the, the basic dehumidifier down there doesn't do the trick. So we get, everything gets moldy down there, so, and we store a lot of stuff. So when we go down, we have to wear masks. It's just not pleasant. So, so we got the three quotes. And you see from your paperwork, the best one that came in was also the cheapest, so. I know that.
I just want it to work out that way.
It worked out great. So if you have any questions about any of that, we can certainly answer them.
How long have we known that there's a mold, mold problem?
Years.
All right, let's, let's start with a motion to approve.
Make motion.
And second, good, all right. So, anyone? Questions?
No issues of disruption.
Did you like the pictures? No, no, it just so happened it rained that day and the walls were nice and wet when I took the pictures, so.
What a coincidence.
Yeah, yeah.
So we got to look at all three here to figure out which way we're going.
Budget dry, right?
Yeah, you're recommending budget dry.
Um, yeah, we're right.
Because you said it's the lowest, but you also felt it was.
Yeah, Mike, you want to speak about that?
So the first quote, which came in a lot higher than the other two, I was not there at that walkthrough. I, that I understand that that company will only guarantee their work if they refinish the entire space as opposed to just where we're being impacted. The other two that did come in lower, we're able to quote and guarantee the dryness in the space that they work. The other piece with budget dry is that if we do end up having issues in another section, it's like a snap-on system, so they can add to it if we do end up having a water problem in another area. But at this point, budget dry will guarantee the dryness and the solution in the area that we're looking at.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
You leave my snap on it.
So they, they basically, they dig the trench and then where the drainage system goes, they can add on additional pieces, like they snap together in the ground before they're recovered up for the drainage. So if they need to add to it, they can move down a section of wall by just snapping new drainage pieces and pipes along the trail.
Yeah.
Like the curtain drain.
Yeah, yeah. I've already talked to Mayor Jane about the financing and I've given Steve from Facilities the heads up about, about all this.
So, so actually I have a fine trench question on that very point, which is they, I sort of catch, jump to the end here, and they have a sort of a very short window within which they expect to get paid. Mary Jane, you may be on top of this already, but there's literally payments that remain unpaid for more than ten days. It's not even net thirty. Ten days result in a one and a half percent interest rate per month. I mean, somebody might want to strike a thirty through that and make sure they're on the same schedule we're on.
Yeah, we could, we can certainly talk to them about that. He's been very reasonable. We had, we actually did this quote months ago and then had him redo it recently. He came in at the same price, so he's been really easy to work with, so I'm sure that we can talk to him about that.
Yeah, not that somebody's going to jam us up, but it's, we better.
Good point.
Work conforms with what everybody's thinking.
Of course.
This is a new name for me. I assume the town has not had the need for this type of thing, but have we checked references and people have, have worked on many people?
So this company, the Budget Dry, is actually the one I've contacted a bunch of local contractors who they recommended. They said that's your best bet. For a lot of like the basement, I contacted Basement Systems of Connecticut, and they said that they basically do full basement remodels and they put out a lot of their work for Budget Dry.
So they haven't given us any previous clients to contact?
Correct. We have not reached out to a previous client.
That's not typically required of the three quote rule. It isn't a bid document. Any other questions? All right, let me call the question. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Item six, Town Engineer Janice Blazek, come on in. Six dot one, discuss and take possible action on the renewal of the on-call sidewalk contract.
Good morning.
Good morning, Janice.
So last year, we, we put out to bid our on-call sidewalk work, and I had attached the bid results from last year, and I added in the two percent increase to pricing for William M. Layden. And as part of the contract, we selected William Layden last year, and they had agreed to continue contract with a two percent increase each year. So looking at the numbers, it still makes total sense to stay with them, and so leave our contract with them started last May, some point in May, so it'll be May forward that, the next year, that these, the two percent increase would apply.
Is there a motion? Hold on, second. Any other further questions? Let me try your mind. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye, that motion carries. Six dot two, consider and take possible action on approval of the Losip plan. Not to be confused with the.
Losip, yeah. So Losip, we've typically used Losip for like local matches and things for federal projects like the Sawmill Road Bridge and the sidewalks on Route seventy-seven. Those projects utilize, I believe, Losip for some of the local match. We haven't utilized our allocation over the past few years, and so it's built up to, I think, it's over three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. We still have an outstanding balance towards the Sawmill Road project, which we're still in the process of closing out, and then once that's closed out, any balance will go back to our, you know, balance at the Losip funding. But right now, our accounting shows about three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then they've recently changed the program, which I found out by looking up, trying to look up our balance, that they're now just going to give us a, a grant as opposed to an allocation application, all this other stuff. So there's only certain things that can apply for Losip. So we have an allocation coming of two, two, two hundred and six thousand, six hundred and three dollars and seventy-five cents as of June. We're expecting that payment, I think. So looking at what we have for expenditures, I, I thought it was best that we, we have this paving plan that we've put together with, with the works and paving certainly qualifies for this funding. So in an effort to utilize the outstanding balances and utilize our new allocation, I thought it was best that we use up the Losip monies first, and then any balance for the paving program would come out of our, our capital funding. And so, so I put together the, the paving program, working with Dave Castro, and came up with the list you see before you of the six roads, and we'd like to.
We had that?
Oh, sorry.
No, it's not your fault. All right, let me, I'll read them.
Yeah.
I'll read them. Mustang Drive with four catch basins, mill, mill of about fifteen thousand, overlay with curb, sixty-three and a half. Coventry Way, which has ten catch basins, about fourteen thousand, just a little over a hundred thousand dollars with overlay curb. Cornwall Lane, eight, basically, fourteen thousand, about ninety-seven thousand for the overlay with curb. North Mill Circle, mill about twenty-five thousand and overlay with curb a hundred and eight. Ledgeview Lane, two basins, around eleven thousand and forty-six thousand with overlay curb. And then lastly, State Street, Route one to Broad Street, six basins and about nine thousand on mill and a hundred and twenty-six thousand overlay with curb. So a total of thirty-six catch base, catch base and tops to be replaced.
What's the total of those six?
The total project cost is six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. So we're looking at, that includes catch base and top replacements, which were done by our, our guys ahead of milling and overlay. And we're looking at the Losip funding for twenty twenty-four, two hundred and six thousand and change. Losip funding prior to twenty twenty-four, three seventy-five and change, and then the capital funding would be about eighty-six thousand dollars to do that paving program for this year.
And this does not include Losip, it's typical replacement.
This does not include any chip sealing or crack sealing or any kind of micro ceiling across the road that Dave is doing separately. Yeah, so this is, this is true resurfet, resurfacing, meaning we mill out like an inch and a half to two inches, and we put back the same amount and new curbs along the edge of the road and, you know, new catch base and top. So you basically have a new road.
We need a motion?
Need a second?
Second.
All right, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all the questions, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Great, thank you.
I got an interesting telephone call on, I think it was Friday afternoon, late in the day, from Senator Christine Cohen. Bond Commission is meeting this week, and the connectivity grants are being awarded. And rumor has it that Guilford will be receiving the award for the connectivity grant to take the sidewalks from the old water tower all the way to Madison.
Oh, wow.
That should be, that should be comfortable. Just another project.
More work for us.
Good for you. Start that cementing.
All right, thank you.
Item seven, Director of Human Resources, Mitch Goldblatt. Seven dot one, adoption of revised part-time employee sick policy.
Good morning.
Sick leave policy.
Sick leave policy. So for those who have been following the state legislature this year, you know that one of the bills they worked on was to expand paid sick leave for all employees, which means that our part-time employee sick policy is no, well, as of January first, we've got plenty of time. As of January first, will no longer be in compliance. So I worked with both Chris Hodgson and Rebecca Goldberg at Virtue Moses to come up with a revision to our policy for our part-time workers, although a lot of this will actually also affect our full-time workers as well. But for part-time workers, basically, it's no longer, as of January first, you'll earn a sick hour from thirty work instead of forty. You can, it's effective after a hundred and twenty calendar days as opposed to six hundred and eighty hours worked. It does not, it does not apply to seasonal or temporary workers. It's just our, our regular part-time workers. And they've also expanded the, the reasons people can take sick leave as well. So what I've done is I've given you both a red line copy, so you can see the changes that were made from our current policy as well as a clean copy to read through and just will eventually be distributed. So like I said, it's plenty of time, but it was something I decided to take a jump on based on some of the information I had received from our attorneys to, to start working on that. And so it's before you today, if they have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them if I can.
So a, a lot of part-time employees are twenty-four hours, but some are fewer than twenty-four hours.
This would, this would pertain to any of the part-time employees that are regular employees, not considered seasonal, not considered temporary. It'd be twenty-four hours. It could be less than twenty-four hours if somebody's working, you know, regular.
So if you're, if you're eighteen hours, but you're not seasonal and you're not temporary, you're going to fall under there?
Yes, and they do, they do, those people currently do fall.
Great, that's great. I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
This puts us in compliance with state statutes.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Ooh.
Second. Any further comments or questions? Let me try your mind. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Mitch, thank you very much. Item seven eight. Yep. Going up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So as we have in the past, we have upgraded the systems at Adams at the police courts. And now we're looking to upgrade the lighting system at the Guilford High School. It puts the access in right in our employees' hands to change and, and set times of the lights. And we didn't get second quotes. We, we really should stay with the same system. So we're using program funds for that as well.
That wasn't good. That's always nice to hear. No, you're happy with the current provider?
Very happy. And I think that this is the reason why we waited.
Yeah.
To make sure that the systems that we're using now are working. And Bitner was our recent one, which we did get a few calls late at night that the games ended earlier. So rather than keeping the lines on, the lights on at the scheduled time, we were able to turn them off remotely.
Great.
And save some money.
I'll move it.
Move your second.
Second.
Well, this hopefully will result in less calls to the Selectman's office. I feel that a call on the Guilford High School tennis courts not, not more than two or three weeks ago. And unfortunately, there's the current system, existing systems are all manual dependent. Yeah, there are some timelines you can set, but once they're set.
Right.
It's difficult to actually be there.
And especially, right, especially when there's a power outage or something like that, then of course, then they're, they're not set anymore. So from our homes, we can, we can make that switch.
Good, great.
All right, so we have a motion to award a contract for thirteen thousand to our existing vendor for the control link control system quote. Let me try your mind. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries.
Great, hey, thank you.
So agreeable today. The meeting's not over yet.
All right, appointments and resignations, uh, eight dot one, eight, uh, eight one is act on recommendation appointment. Barry is a member at large of, uh, Land, not lean, uh, Land Acquisition Commission, for term to begin June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and expire June eighteenth, twenty-twenty-eight. Zero motion.
So moved.
Second, second, uh, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
I just think a comment that the, his bio is blank here. I mean, we, I think we're familiar with him. I think he'd be a fine candidate, but he, something happened here where.
Yeah, it's signed and there's nothing.
It's signed, but it isn't filled out, so.
Well, he, yeah, he is a current.
Right.
Really?
Yours is ours, isn't it? I'm, I'm still ready to pass it. I mean, I know it's, yeah.
Yeah, I have the same thought.
I have one with the, our, our copy that says, uh, he is, uh, political affiliations Democratic, education, N A, University of Wisconsin, uh, Bachelor, P A, uh, Drew University. Uh, occupation is, uh, consulted in the food, uh, industry, um, proven, uh, and, and, what was it, like, distribution, proven in distribution. Uh, he's currently a member of the State Street Task Force, the Guilford Land Trust Board, and Treasurer of Guilford Preservation Alliance.
Reason for applying? I like.
Thoughtful, uh, Reason for applying thoughtful, thoughtful land acquisition is critical for a town of Guilford size. The town has benefited tremendously from the acquisitions made, and it's critical that we maintain a sound policy requiring space, uh, to A, meet this funding, C, provide open space, C, facilitate the development of purposes, of purpose-driven housing, to meet the needs of our cost-burdened citizens. All right, uh, we have a motion in a second. Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Item eight dot two, act on a recommendation to appoint a human, uh, the Board of Police Commissioners for a new term to begin July one, twenty-twenty-four, and expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
Second.
So, so move it in a second. Uh, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Uh, eight dot three, act on a resignation received from Jeff Hedberg, um, from the Standing Building Committee. Is there a motion to do so with appreciation and regret?
So moved.
Second, uh, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Item four, consider take possible action on the appointment of members to, uh, to the Affordable Housing Commission. Sandy, I'm gonna let you, uh, uh, sort of take the wheel on this one a little bit.
Okay.
You are, uh, integral to the, the decision of us, man. This is your.
I noticed on Zoom, we have, um, at least two members of the committee that's about to be, well, is, commission's been established, and we're just gonna talk about the members today. Um, so, um, we published in the paper, and I believe on the town website, that the Board of Selectmen established the commission, and then the next step was to appoint commission members. There are six members, two alternates, so total of eight, and then three representatives from, um, various town agencies. Um, I will be stepping off the committee as co-chair and become the, I believe, the Board of Selectmen.
Designate, this, the Selectmen's designee.
Yes, it's a Selectmen's designee. Um, and then, um, we, Scott Edmonds, who's been attending committee meetings for quite a while, will continue to be the, uh, designee from the, um, Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Guilford Housing Authority, um, for quite a while. Peter Palumbo used to attend our committee meetings, but he's resigned from the Housing Authority, and Rita D'Totola has been appointed in his position, and when, um, she was interviewed by the D T C for, for the appointments to the Housing Authority, she expressed an interest and, um, uh, experience with affordable housing, so she will, um, start. Um, I mean, she's on the Guilford Housing Authority now, but she will be their designated representative to the committee, to the commission, excuse me, and the last three names, myself, Scott, and Rita, we're not voting members, but we are part of the composite, commission, and then we have some town liaisons, uh, uh, Janice and, um, and, 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 uh, Harchen, and Harchen being the town planner is officially mentioned, I believe, in the, um, wording. Janice is not, but believe me, it's very helpful to have her there too. Is she mentioned in it? I don't know.
No, she's not.
I don't think so.
No, she's not.
Um, but, um, she's, it's very helpful to have her at the meeting. So, um, we actually believe we found a recording secretary, which is one of the major hurdles of, uh, getting this going. And, um, we, the committee established our next meeting. We've been meeting monthly. And, um, if you're, if you approve the commission members today, then they will get letters inviting them to that June eleventh meeting. And then we will discuss, as a commission, when we're gonna, we have, we're gonna have to be more, uh, regular about when our meetings are. You know, we've been a little goosey-goosey with them, but now we're gonna have to say, for instance, they're gonna be the second Tuesday of every month at four o'clock, or whatever. And then we're allowed to call special meetings as necessary, and, and as all the commissions, the meetings will be noticed, the minutes will be available. Tracy is very good at helping us keep on the straight and narrow, and I wanna publicly thank Tracy for all of our help so far. I, I thought the chair, the co-chair of the committee would be here, Kristy Rubendust, but, um, I'm, I don't know where she is, but that's all right. I can continue. So, um, you have the, um, names of the, the, you have all the applications and the names. So I, I, I don't really know, did you want me to read the names?
No, I, I think we will, we will accept the recommendation of the committee, uh, for the applicants as they were, uh, as they were. That's my motion.
I, I will say that, um, a number of people who have been serving on the committee will now be commission members, but we have a few new people as well, um, that reached out and, um, we went through the vetting process, or whatever you wanna call it, and I'm, I'm very excited about this, and I think it's a great, uh, thing for, for the town. And I'm not commending myself, but I mean, I commend the people who are gonna be serving on the commission.
Yes, I agree with that. It's a great committee. Does this, um, commission, does this commission have to follow the bare majority?
Um, it does, we have, uh, a number of applicants to satisfy that rule.
I have to say, we were aware of that, but we couldn't, uh, we did the best we could.
So this is similar to, uh, this is the, um, uh, what is it, Social Services, uh,
Human Rights.
Human Services, the Guilford Human Rights Commission. If an applicant, um, uh, comes forward who's looking to do, to, to fill it, then we will make that accommodation at that time. That is what, uh, Attorney Barrett had indicated. We could continue to have them do the business of the committee work until such time as someone had asked to be, uh, asked to.
So, oh, I see, so not voting. The terms are staggered also, so that there'll be opportunities. Like, you know, in order not to have everybody going off in the same year, there are some people that are only on for two-year terms.
Understood.
So there'll be an opportunity at that time to, if somebody applied.
So I, if I understood correctly, I don't, I don't know how we count the, uh, point, um, of the six regular members and the two alternates, for a total of eight. I'm seeing one Republican and seven Democrats. Um, and I also see there were, are three names of applicants who we were not able to place. And I believe Mr. Teep is from the Independent Party, so.
But he withdrew.
He withdrew.
He withdrew, and Peggy, was Peggy Britt, she withdrew as well.
Okay, so.
And the other applicant, I believe, was a D, so, you know, I don't know. I'm pretty sure.
We didn't even have those applications, so I don't know. So I, I just, I don't understand how this works. Why wouldn't we place the number of people that we can place under the bare majority rule, and leave vacancies and continue to solicit? I just wanna make sure we're dotting the i's on that. It doesn't seem right to me.
Yeah, we can, we can let Pete weigh in, but we've, uh, this is past practice with the, um, Human Rights Commission, uh, same thing. And then also on the Human Services Commission, uh, where we have, uh, year after year field to get, um, candidates from, uh, the Republican Party for those, for those commissions.
Yeah. Or independent, or, yeah, yes, or, yes. We would look honestly for I, U, R, everybody, but this is what happened.
So, so what happens when there's a vote? I, I just don't understand.
These are seated members, they vote.
Seated members.
Right, so the, the alternates can't vote, uh, unless they are, uh, sitting in for someone who is a regular member who is missing.
Of course, so, and, and, uh, I apologize for not being more familiar with the wording of the ordinance and the, I guess wherever else it's addressed in our rules, but that's how, that's how it's, it's written that way. Okay.
Well, I, I, I think it may be interpretation as opposed to written. Pete, um, you want to weigh in here? Pete, you there?
I, I am here, sorry. I was, uh, I was multitasking. What's the, uh, what's the question?
The luxury of Zoom. The question is related to, uh, the bare majority rule as it applies to the, uh, uh, this commission, the, uh, Guilford Affordable Housing Commission, and Sue has brought up a good point. Uh, there, there's only one, uh, minority, not, yeah, mi- minority candidate, candidate that, that had identified, well, there were two. Um, and, uh, Mike had, uh, one, one of them withdrew. So the composition does not meet the, um, bare majority rule, uh, requirements. Uh, and as I've indicated in conversation here, um, this is not inconsistent with at least two other, uh, boards or commissions that I'm familiar with, that have operated for years, uh, without, uh, compliance on the bare majority rule, because we've been unable to secure candidates to participate. So in order to, to conduct the business, we, uh, we have a full slate, uh, appointed, uh, and, uh, they are seated and are regular voting members, so, your thoughts?
Well, okay, now, I have to say, that's news to me, that I, I hadn't really paid attention to which party was getting, or how many parties were involved. You know, so the question to me is, do you go ahead and fill those spots with, you know, the same majority party, or do you leave them vacant? Um, I'd like to take a look at that. I, I, my, my gut reaction is you might have to leave them vacant.
Well, if that's the case, Pete, it's inconsistent with past practice.
Okay, well.
Well, do we need to just put this off?
Table it, table it till Pete gets breakfast, that's right.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that specific question. I'll get back to you.
Sure. Is this going to interfere with the business of the new commission? Yes, it will.
Um, well, it just slows it down, you know, um, the, the people that were nominated haven't, way it worked, if you, if we had passed it as the Board of Selectmen, they would have gotten letters saying that they had been appointed. So they have not gotten letters yet saying that they're appointed. So, um, you know, we can still have a meeting as the committee on, on Ju- June eleventh. We still exist as the committee, you know, we don't, we, we don't have commission members, we're not, we can't be as a commission, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
All right, so, is it, you know, you folks probably already know this, I just wanna remind you though, it's about majority party versus non-majority party. So it's unaffiliated, it's, it's other parties, no matter how many others there are. Tho- those are, yeah, but you guys know, all right.
Yeah, at this point, it's, uh, uh, all them save for one Republican. Uh, no independents, no unaffiliated people.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'll take a look at it.
Got it. All right, is there a motion to table?
I'll move the table.
Oh, we moved, okay, I'll second.
Second. Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Uh, those in the room? Thanks, Pete. We'll look forward to your, uh, your, your recommendation. Um, item nine, request for use of town property, nine dot one, act on a request from Guilford Rotary to place a sun in on the green, advertising as Lobster Fest and lobster run on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Lou, you wanna make that?
I'd like to make that motion.
I would thought so. Is there a second?
Second.
Both members of the Rotary. Um, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, nine dot two, act on a request from Guilford High School to use the green on June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four for the graduation ceremony. I don't think we have much choice in this one, do we? Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
In a second, in a second, good. Uh, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries.
One of the highlights of the year.
What's that?
One of the highlights of the year.
Absolutely. Uh, item ten, committee reports. I think you're just giving. That's it. Uh, correspondence, old business?
I, oh, I was just gonna make, I don't, when it's appropriate, just to make a compliment comment.
I think right now is right.
Okay, um, I thought it was a goo- a very, uh, positive article in the local paper about the town releasing the digital budget book to the public. But I just thought, um, I just wanted to say that, um, work was done by members of the Finance Department, and I just wanted to give them a little, uh,
Little shout out.
Little shout out.
Mary, yeah.
Mary Jane, uh, and her crew, 'cause I think that's a really good thing, and it sounded like it was easy, but I'm sure it wasn't.
No.
And then all the, I, oh, I realized all the town department heads had to sort of do it slightly differently, and as a former town department head, I give a shout out to them too, but I think it's a great thing, and hopefully we'll make it easier for everybody when they have a budget question.
And we're gonna continue to tweak it.
Yeah.
As you, as you may have seen in the book itself, there are varying levels of detail related to what each department either accomplished or, or did, you know, how many permits did the, 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 the Town Clerk's Office submit versus, you know, how many, uh, how many library visits, or how many books in circulation. So I think those are all the kinds of, that, that's the kind of data that I think substantiates, um, the, the ask and, and the spend. Um, and, you know, with the board of governors, the tiers of some of that stuff, at, uh, at budget time, when I have the, the departments come in and list all they do, but I think it's important that the community knows what they're getting, and it's not, you know, uh, and, you know, the Town Clerk's Office isn't very glorified, uh, in, in the minds of most, most people. Most people aren't saying, I wanna grow up and be a town clerk, uh, as opposed to a fireman, or a policeman, or, you know, or a librarian, or, you know, or, or a teacher. Um, so just the, the amount of work that goes through, so.
Yeah, so to that end, um, with the budget, we all know that two-thirds is really, is school-related, and that's common in most towns. But when you look at what, what, what the other one-third covers, there was a letter to the paper where a citizen kind of delineated that, but I just think this helps too, if people wanna spend the time to look, but I mean, this, we are, I think, giving bang for our tax book.
And there are over twenty different departments, uh, it's sort of like being a general manager over a lot, a lot of small little businesses, right? Um, so, it is, but it's also a lot. All right, new business? Like I said, that's gonna constitute, that constitutes new business, right?
Okay.
Um, public forum. Anyone wishing to address in public forum? That's gonna be for, uh, the senior tax release program.
Oh, okay.
Morning.
Good morning, Deb.
Deborah Denise Sis, eighteen, Sugarloaf Road. Um, I just wanna say that I must have missed something, 'cause I do handle, um, uh, applicants for boards and commissions, and I didn't realize that we could seek within our RTC to look for people on the affordable housing. So I didn't go out.
Or you might have missed it, or something.
I don't know. How would I get notification?
It didn't go through the D T C nominating committee either. It was in the paper, I think it said, people interested should directly, for a commission, directly apply through the Selectment.
Okay, so, when, although, I, okay, so I do understand that part of it, but then when you bring up the part that it, it is nice to have a combination of Republicans, independents, and affiliates. I guess my sort of little job is to try to, um, you know, bring applicants in that could be on boards and commissions, so I failed in that manner to read that. So I just wanted to bring that up. Um, and we have had applicants, um, that have tried to be on various boards and commissions, and sometimes they get discouraged. So I wouldn't say that, um, you know, we are trying, and we are, we will continue to try to get people.
I will tell you that.
I mean, we try to look.
Honestly, you know, we were, we would have. This honestly, you know, we were, we would have liked it to be a little more mixed.
Sure.
And there, there wasn't, with the exception of the one, one gentleman, Mike, who was independent but withdrew himself, we, there was no one else to put, even of the three that didn't go on.
No, I understand, no, 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 I'm not, I'm not, no. No, I'm not, I'm not blaming anyone for, and not only that, I think that when I do try to, you know, seek people that might want to be on a board or commission, I'll say to them, you know, either go to their meetings or look, if they have Zoom, look at it, see if it's something that you're qualified for, that you're interested in, that you're really going to, you know, make the effort to do what needs to be done for that commission. So, you know, I will now say, look into it, I'll see if there's anyone interested. So I thank you for that. And the other quick thing, I'm sorry.
My cellphone number is on the, I mean, I can give it to you right now.
Yes, no, 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 I know, yes, yes. You know, I, I know where, I know where to get it. And then the other thing was that in December, I think I had mentioned that it would be really great to have robo calls for important town meetings. And I, I think I was referring to the marijuana. You know, maybe you would get people, even though I know you guys, you know, it's, it's always good to reach out whether they come or not. So I just did realize that the meeting for the marijuana moratorium or informational meeting is this evening and it's at seven. And I didn't realize it was here. So at, being here at the Board of, it will be in this room, I guess, that's what I'd like to know.
And on Zoom.
And on Zoom.
Which is why we did it here.
Right, no, 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 I saw that, I saw that. So it is here, it's on Zoom, and I just wish it was on the flashing screen to remind people, thank you.
Thank you, Deb. And Deb, do not take this as your, as, you were wrong in any way, you were apologizing for this.
Oh.
That is not.
No, 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 I understand that, it's just that, you know, I, I, I just didn't realize it, I guess, so, yeah.
Thanks, Deb. All right, anybody else in public forum? Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss possible action on appeal from residents per section two forty-seven dash thirty-one, right of appeal, Article seven, elderly tax leave program? Second?
Second.
Second, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye, that motion carries. All right, let me just close the door.
Need a cut?
Don't. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved, second.
In a second, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici. I see you again, yeah.
Here we go, aye, aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Executive session, there were no motions made and no actions taken. But as a result of our discussion and deliberations, is there a motion to approve the appeal that we heard while we were in executive session?
So moved.
Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room? That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, you're welcome. All right, is there any other business?
Just about tonight, I'm planning to come here.
Yes.
Just wanted, I might just, I'm planning to come personally.
All right. I also have some data. Call for two. They have a facility there. The income that is generated is significantly more than anyone thought was gonna happen. They may have a corner of the market because of where they are in.
He kept it a tally.
Income to the town. Get those numbers up.
I hate it when I hear that.
No, no, that's not, that's not the reason to do it. But, 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 but.
And we have really not discussed it that much, that, you know, that three percent thing.
And, and if that, if, if we were to go that way, I would assume we would use that money for a very specific purpose, not general tax. Anyway, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries.
See everybody tonight.
You got it.